All right, we have returned from our break. And we're moving on to administrative matters. Item 10A from the City Council ad hoc naming of Public Facilities Committee and City Managers. Their staff presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Irene O'Neil, Management Assistant in the City Manager's Office. Item 10A is a recommendation of the City Council ad hoc naming of the Public Facilities Committee and the City Manager to one accept and file the ad hoc naming of the Public Facilities Committee meeting minutes for the January 15, 2025 meeting and discuss and provide direction on the renaming of the Toyota Meeting Hall. So to provide some context for the situation, the Torrance City Manager's Office recently presented two key items to the City Council's ad hoc naming of the Public Facilities Committee, both of which were discussed and acted upon during the January 15 meeting. Number one, individuals actively serving in elected, appointed, or employed roles would be excluded from the naming eligibility, except in special circumstances at the direction and discretion of City Council. The second was the application for the naming of the General Aviation Center, also known as GAC, in honor of Frank Robinson. Frank Robinson was the founder of Robinson Helicopter Company. The application was originally approved unanimously by the Airport Commission and submitted to City Council in September 2023. Frank Robinson passed away unfortunately in 2022, making him eligible under the city's naming policy, which generally requires a minimum of one year waiting period after an individual's death. And finally, the ad hoc facility meeting discussed the renaming of the Toyota Meeting Hall, which we discuss further detail throughout this presentation. So just for some context, the city's current naming policy was established under Resolution Number 2008-81, which outlines criteria for naming or renaming city-owned land, building, and facilities. Any name or renaming of a facility must fall under one or more of the following categories. Number one, have a geographical or topographical or historical relevance to Torrance. Number two, honor individuals who have served the city, state, or nation in an exceptional matter, with the limitation that active service members are excluded apart from special circumstances. And number three, recognize individuals, families, or organizations who have donated lands or funds to the city. So in 2023, former Councilmember Griffiths received council concurrence, excuse me, to direct staff to explore the renaming of Toyota Meeting Hall and the possibility of an organization or philanthropist to sponsor the facility for its naming rights. So again, for context, this council concurrence is operating under this third category, the third clause of the resolution, which authorizes the public facilities to be named after individuals, families, or organizations who have donated lands or funds to the city. And just to clarify, individuals should not be permitted to donate lands or funds arbitrarily to have a facility or asset named after them. Essentially, any naming consideration should be directly tied to the nature and the purpose of the donation, as well as its relevance to the specific land or facility involved. So staff reviewed naming policies from other municipalities and examined internal considerations to establish a donation threshold for the naming of city-owned facilities. This approach ensures that naming decisions are aligned and established with practices and reflect the significance of the contributions. For context, these municipal comparisons are reflective of the financial thresholds only and do not consider any additional restrictions that the city may have in place alongside these financial contributions. Starting with the city of Costa Mesa, a facility cannot be named until a donor contributes more than 50% of the purchase price to the city. However, the city of San Diego takes a different approach, providing three options for its potential donors. Option number one is a significant contribution towards the capital construction of the structure. Number two is a deed to the city of land for the majority of the city asset by the donor. Or number three is a 20-year endowment for the continued maintenance and operation of the city assets. So speaking of maintenance, when going through potential financial considerations and donations, staff wanted to bring attention the current conditions of the facility at its current time, with future maintenance that needs to be taken into consideration. After assessing the current condition of the facility, staff estimates that the facility will be approximately $1.2 million for maintenance within the next 10 years, give or take. This estimate includes the repairs to outdoor wood trellis exposed to the elements, the mandatory replacement of soon-to-be-outdated fire alarm systems, as well as the soon-to-be-outdated air conditioning handle unit. These are just a few of the repairs and upkeep costs that will be required within the next 10 years or so for consideration. Additionally, the hall is currently under consideration as part of the city's forthcoming Civic Center master plan. This comprehensive initiative aims to modernize and reimagine the Civic Center, potentially requiring modifications or even the deconstruction of the existing structure to align with the city's long-term vision. Given the scale and the complexity of this endeavor, the renovation project is projected to commence in approximately 10 to 15 years contingent upon the completion of preceding phases and availability of funding, of course, all at the discretion of council. But please note that these are timelines of preliminary estimates reflecting the evolving nation nature of the Civic Center master plan, and as such, the hall status may be temporary and its future will be determined in alignment with broader redevelopment So with all the elements provided, staff has created the following options for consideration. Number one, council may choose to retain the current name, given the uncertain nature of the Civic Center master plan timeline and as an affirmation to Toyota's lasting impact. Option number two, council may also choose to rename the facility and direct staff to initiate a name change campaign with one or more of the following options. Option A, seeking potential donors for the naming rights agreement, which would include a termination clause and relocation rights. Number two, setting contribution thresholds or dedicate the hall to an individual of exceptional public service. And finally, the third option would be to direct staff to research other options or provide different updates based on the council's request or additional questions at hand. If council wishes to move forward with the renaming of the hall and would like to set certain contribution thresholds, staff has come up with three alternatives with some adjustments from the ad hoc committee at their January 15 meeting. First, we have listed the status quo on the presentation slide, which is the original donation from Toyota of approximately $1.2 million, which if broken up would be approximately $49,452 per year for 24 years and one-third years, give or take. The second option mirrors Toyota's effective donation per year, which would cover approximately 41%, excuse me, would cover 100% of the expected major capital maintenance cost over 10 years. So essentially, broken down, that would be $121,177 per year over 10 years. Option two would cover and mirror the effective donation per year, which would cover approximately 41% of the expected maintenance costs over the next five years, meaning $98,903.72 per year for five years would total approximately $494,518.58. This option was updated based on the committee's request to shorten the length of commitment and capital required from a potential donor. Finally, the third option would mirror the contribution thresholds of Costa Mesa and San Diego models, covering 50% of the expected major capital maintenance costs over 10 years. So again, this would be approximately $60,000 per year for 10 years totaling to $605,000. So just to recap, staff is recommending that the City Council accept and file the meeting minutes from the January 15 ad hoc committee meeting, as well as discuss and provide direction on the renaming of the Toyota Meeting Hall, either to keep the name, to change the name, and set a campaign with a particular contribution threshold, or to provide other alternatives that have not been presented tonight at this particular presentation. And staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No, Your Honor, they haven't.
Okay. Do any members of the public wish to speak on this item? You have one minute. Please come to the microphone.
Hello, everyone. I don't know why you have to rename this facility, because, you know, I think Toyota was a good employer in the city of Torrance. Thousands of people worked there, and unfortunately, they had to go for economic reason. So as I looked it up on the other thing, already like population of Torrance is less than 2,000 than it was before. Businesses and people leaving the city for other and better living conditions and affordable living. So Toyota provided a great donations and, you know, the sports facilities, the city meeting room. So let's not throw that topic.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? I don't see any. I'll go to the council. Councilman Matusi.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, with all the plans that we have coming up, you know, it might be a little bit longer time, but nevertheless, if we're going to ask for the investment of renaming a building, I would hope that it's a little bit more longevity to the building. I'd say we just leave it alone and maybe work on a renaming structure, you know, that would also include sponsorships and private investment. And also, I guess, just go back just one second, the $121,000 a year, that's about $10,000 a month. Is that including utilities and labor to clean it, or is that maintenance only? Like, do you know? Anybody?
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. Tom Maker-Duchy, General Services. As I understand it, that dollar number was just to cover the cost of future capital needs of that facility, the HVAC system, the fire alarm, and the trellis outside.
Mayor, Councilman, and Delia Finance Director, that's an example of what we've included in our capital demand, so that was a result of the building index study. And if you recall in the budget presentation, we had sort of the minimum investment required. That's from that column. That would be the amount that is required within 10 years.
Got you. So it's not ongoing monthly, it's just a cumulative over the years, yeah?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, so I would say the wise thing to do is to just leave it alone for now and see what the plan is. That building may not even be there five years from now, you know, depending on how things go. So, thank you.
Councilman McCollany.
Thank you, Mayor. Similar to Councilmember Matusi's, I think we leave it for now. Toyota continues to be a contributing member of our community through their not-for-profit outreaches and things like that, and certainly, they have a history with us as well. But that was just a comment, and thank you for bringing this to our, as a presentation. But also, what stood out for me, just number-wise, was a business could come and get two five-year terms for less than one 10-year. The numbers kind of stood out as a little bit awkward for me. Thank you.
Councilman Sheikh.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. You may have said that, but I just want to ask for clarification. Did we, Toyota is not contributing anymore, right? They just did one-time donation for that $1.2 million?
That is correct.
Why don't we ask Toyota if they want to contribute more so we can keep their name for five years more until we do our master Civic Center plan?
That's a great question, Councilmember. That is exactly what staff is requesting at this time, is for further contribution for the renaming or maintaining the name of the Toyota Meeting Hall, trying to establish some type of threshold for continued contribution of donations, either for this, for Toyota, or any other potential donor or sponsor. We have tried, attempted to establish different donation thresholds. If council would like to work with Toyota in the future, that's something staff can look into. But at this time, staff was requested to look into potential contribution thresholds for a potential donor.
You were going to say something?
Thank you. Mayor, Members of the Council, Danny Santana, City Manager's Office. Councilman Sheikh, we certainly could do that, but not without direction of council as to what the expectation is. If it's to realize our capital, our projected capital obligations, if it's for a certain percentage of that, that's essentially what we're looking for, is direction from council, what the expectation would be, and then if council's majority direction is to proceed in that direction, we certainly could.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea to give Toyota the first option. I mean, anything we can get from Toyota or any of the donors for a short term, I know that we have Master Civic Center in the progress, so in the meantime, if we can generate some funding, I think that won't hurt. So at least for the maintenance part, I like the idea to get at least the maintenance part of it. I would definitely agree with that, or if Toyota says no, they don't want to do anything, just reach out to any local businesses. It doesn't hurt. Extra income, we need it. Thank you.
Councilman Kaji.
I agree with Councilman Sheikh. I think that an approach to Toyota Motor Sales USA would be timely, and perhaps through their foundation, we can present to them what our current CapEx requirements are with the structure. And I think also give us a good chance to update them on our ongoing Civic Center master plan and other changes here in the city of Torrance. I don't know if we, as a city, have maintained any contact with Toyota Motor Sales USA since their departure, but I think as the largest auto company in the world, I think it, and since they have made significant improvements during their time here in the city, it's worthwhile to reestablish that connection and to see what else is there. So if I can help in that way, I'm happy to do so. Thanks.
All right. Anyone else on the council has any comments? Yeah, my thought about this is also, at the moment, leave as is. We're always open to, you know, new donations. When I went to the celebration of the Kendo 30th anniversary, I think it was 30, met one of the leaders in Toyota. met one of the leaders in Toyota, and he said he was more than willing. It's probably not, you know, the president, but he is a, and I really try to connect him with our little leaguers to see if they would help out some of that. So every opportunity that we meet someone is an opportunity to do something good. It's kind of like earlier discussion, you know, it's that relationship we're building. When opportunity comes, we just want to see if they can contribute to the future growth and success of our city. But I'm leaning toward, you know, just leave Toyota Meeting Hall as is, because we're still trying to flesh out our future. All right? It looks like Councilman Sheikh is ready to take a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to explore any new donors, but try to reach out to Toyota first, and if anybody learns of it, anything we can get something out of it, I would definitely like that.
So does your motion include, accept and file the report from the committee and leave the naming as is for now?
That's it.
Okay. Just want to make sure I clarify that.
Yeah, accept and file, and reach out, explore other options.
One second.
Start voting, please. Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. There's no agency agendas. We're going to move on to oral communications, number two. This portion of the meeting is reserved for comments on items not on the agenda. Under the Ralph and Brown Act, city council cannot act on items raised during public comment, but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. Request clarification or refer the item to staff. Speaker, under oral communications, or limited to oral communications, number one, or number two, and no longer than one minute per speaker. Time starts when you step up to the microphone. If presenting handout material to the council, please provide eleven copies to the city clerk before speaking. Handouts will be distributed while you speak. Do we have any members of the public who did not speak in oral communications, number one, who wish to speak now? Please come up to the microphone. Okay. I don't see any, so I'm going to go to council orals. Tonight, we start with Councilman Sheikh.
Nothing for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Gerson.
No comment. Thank you.
Councilman Kaji.
I'm fine tonight. Thank you.
Councilwoman McCollany.
If I may, please. I just want to let everybody know that Green Hills, L.A. is honored to host the annual Memorial Day event, again this year, Monday, May twenty-sixth, at ten a.m. But even more importantly, the Vietnam Memorial Moving Wall will be on display twenty-four hours, twenty-four-seven, beginning midday Thursday, May twenty-second, through seven a.m. on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh. So if you haven't been and seen it, it's remarkable. It'll be available, we have to keep it available to the public twenty-four hours a day, so please stop by. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lewis.
I just wanted to give a shout out to all of our city's employees who did an exceptional job this entire weekend with the Armed Forces Day celebrations, from the receptions to the part that our dignitaries enjoy the best, which is the best motorcade ever. It gets people saying, who's in town? Who's in town? And when we come back and say, you are in town, and they go, what? So thank you to the police department, and the fire department, and the SWAT teams for doing that, and all of our city employees who give up their time and energy to make this entire weekend, including the parade, just a great success. So I appreciate it. Also, I wanted to give a shout out to all of the graduates that graduated from either high school, college, and particularly, some of our city of Torrance employees that received their graduate degrees. One may or may not be in the room and may or may not want to stand up. Congratulations on getting your master's degree. You make Torrance proud, and we expect a lot of big, big things from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Matusi.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank everybody that was involved in delivering a very successful and safe Armed Forces Day parade. There was obviously a lot of planning, and of course, as a chair, I just sit there. It's called being the chair, because that's all I do, is just sit on my butt. But no, but I, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of things that are discussed, a lot of plans that are, that are made, but if it weren't for the many, many, many people that are involved, it wouldn't, it wouldn't happen. So, and also my fellow, my fellow committee members, you know, thank you for being there and pushing forward ideas. And, but I want to give a special shout out to Jen, because she kind of kept, she kind of kept me alive with all her papers. So I appreciate you, your involvement in that personal, that personal, I guess, touch on trying to get, get things done smoothly right there when it counts. So, but thank you, guys. Thank you.
All right. And I too want to echo my gratitude to the city staff for last weekend. I think, I also want to thank you, Councilman Matusi. You did more than just sit in the chair. I think you might be the, if I remember correctly, you are the one that thought about adding the Meridian barricades. I think it's, and I think it proved that we, you know, you can never tell, right, how many lives we might have saved, but we know, you know, taking a precaution, because our city wants to look ahead, mitigate risk. Risk mitigation is the best thing, is nothing big happen. And so we did mitigate a potentially a large situation. So I want to thank you for bringing that up, and thank you for PD and the whole staff. I think, I know our dignitaries felt very safe here, and on behalf of my colleagues, we all thank you all, and please share that with all staff members. And I think Councilwoman McCollany, don't, doesn't, Green Hills, did you say that we have this celebration next Monday? So, maybe you could share a little bit?
Oh, okay, yeah. It's Monday, at Green Hills Memorial Park, Monday at ten o'clock. However, the Vietnam Moving Wall is there and available twenty-four hours a day, starting on, I said that a little bit earlier, midday Thursday, the twenty-second, through seven a.m. Tuesday, the twenty-seventh. And some of the individuals that are in the back of the room, always standing up and being recognized, they'll be there helping, helping man it. And it's really nice. You'll be able to go look for names, you can take paper, and you can actually take a rubbing of the name. It's very special, it's very emotional, and very moving.
Thank you, and I'm looking forward. I will be there for the Memorial Day celebration.
Just some additional things. There's skydivers, there's the possession of colors, including the Mounted Posse, and both Torrance PD and Torrance Fire are usually there participating if they're available. There's flyovers, both civilian and military, there's a Navy band, and there's the bagpipe band as well. So it's a great event. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'll just share that the last day and a half, I was actually invited to UCLA Graduate School of Management, and there was actually a Select LA event. There was thirty-two companies from Taiwan that came, and they asked me to sit on the panel, and I was just there promoting the city of Torrance, that if any of these companies are expanding to the United States, I was steering them to the city of Torrance. That lasted all day yesterday until midday today. As we conclude this evening's meeting, I want to thank you for your active participation, interest, and stay informed. Your involvement continues to help shape Torrance and keep us moving forward. Thanks to City Cable for sharing our meetings live. In case you miss any portion of this meeting, you can find it archived online on torranceca.gov, YouTube, and Facebook. And just want to remind the public what our Finance Director, Ian Daley, said, that the entire briefing of the budget from our first budget review is recorded online. So those who missed the very first one, you will get the exhaustive presentation. And now we will go back to closed session. Thank you.
1 2 3 4 5 6 7 8 9 10 11 12 13 14 15 16 17 18 19 20 21 22 23 24 25 26 27 28 29 30 31 32 33 34 35 36 37 38 39 40 41 42 43 44 45 46 47 48 49 50 51 52 53 54 55 56 57 58 59 60 61 62 63 64 65 66 67 68 69 70 71 72 73 74 75 76 77 78 79 80 81 82 83 84 85 86 87 88 89 90 91 92 93 94 95 96 97 98 99 100 101 102 103 104 105 106 107 108 109 110 111 112 113 114 115 116 117 118 119 120 121 122 123 124 125 126 127 128 129 130 131 132 133 134 135 136 137 138 139 140 141 142 143 144 145 146 147 148 149 150 151 152 153 154 155 156 157 158 159 160 161 162 163 164 165 166 167 168 169 170 171 172 173 174 175 176 177 178 179 180 181 182 183 184 185 186 187 188 189 190 191 192 193 194 195 196 197 198 199 200
Good evening. We have returned from closed session. City manager, anything to report out?
Nothing to report, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right. So I'll take the motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn tonight's city council meeting to Tuesday, June 3, 2025 at 5:00 p.m. for closed session with the regular business commencing at 6:30 p.m. in the Leroy J. Jackson Council Chamber.
Second.
Start voting, please. Your Honor, that motion carried with council members Kaji and Shayke absent.
Thank you. Good night. 10:09.